The time is 5:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umbel Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 5:00 PM. of the public. The Umbel ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are being presented by Umbel High School Army JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance and salute to the Texas flag. I don't see the ROTC.
I didn't see them either.
Okay. I don't see the ROTC here tonight, so...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Union of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Well, I would love to welcome back from winter break, everyone. It's great to have everybody back. January is School Board Recognition Month throughout the state of Texas. School Board members are volunteers. They donate hundreds of hours to attend meetings, consider issues, set policies, and participate in student and community events. They are dedicated to making Umbel ISD a wonderful place to learn, live, and grow. Our inspiring moment tonight features a joint performance by the Umbel High School Varsity Orchestra and a vocalist from Kingwood Park High School. While they perform, images from throughout the district will play on the screen. The performance is dedicated to our Board of Trustees.
I see trees of green, red roses too. I see them bloom for me and you, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I see skies of blue and clouds of white, the bright blessed day, the dark sacred night, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. The colors of the rainbow so pretty in the sky are also on the faces of the people passing by. I see friends shaking hands, saying how do you do. They're really saying, I love you. I hear babies cry, I watch them grow. They'll learn much more than I'll ever know, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Oh, yeah.
Thank you for making Umbel ISD a wonderful world.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's okay. It's okay. I feel perfect in my face. This is really high-tech. You just like materialize. Okay. Our wonderful facilities and staff are a direct result of the dedication of our school board to provide the very best to our community. And Zachary Mann from Eagle Springs Elementary said it perfectly, "Thank you for making Umbel ISD a wonderful world." Thank you, Zachary, for being here and bringing us the flowers. We really appreciate it. Thank you also to the Umbel High School Orchestra for being here tonight. The orchestra program at Umbel High School consists of about 100 students. We couldn't pack them all in here, but we appreciate this group for being here tonight along with their director, Andrew McCallum. So, thank you to all of you. And last but not least, also with us tonight is our vocalist from Kingwood Park High School, Cameron Williams. He is in choir and theater at Kingwood Park. Thank you for sharing your talent with us tonight. To celebrate all that you do, Board members will find at their seats a commemorative book featuring photos from the past year, as well as cards and letters submitted by students from the following campuses. Autumn Creek Elementary School, Foster Elementary School, Green Tree Elementary School, Timbers Elementary School, Woodland Hills Elementary School, Autumn Ridge Middle School, and Kingwood Middle School. The birch tree watercolor paintings were created by third-grade art students at Deerwood Elementary under the direction of...
Art class?
Yes, under the direction of art teacher Ramona Michael. The "We Are the Light" ceramic luminaries were created by art students at Centennial Elementary under the direction of art teacher Corinne Pugh. Thank you for being an outstanding school board that supports every teacher and every campus in doing what is best for our students. Zachary just has to say. We're still going. And there's more. Wait, there's more. Our community has a longstanding tradition of supporting students who raise animals through our agriculture programs. This February will bring the 76th Annual Livestock Show. Tonight, FFA students from Atascida, Umbel, Kingwood, Kingwood Park, and Summer Creek High Schools are here to tell us more about the event. Welcome.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Fagan. My name is Addison Hughes, and I'm the president of the Summer Creek FFA chapter. And the FFA members would like to invite you and the community to join us at the Umbel ISD Livestock Show and Auction, which will be held from Tuesday, January 31st to Friday, February 3rd, at the Umbel Civic Center and Arena. There are two major ways you can show your support. The first is by participating as a buyer at our auction, held on Thursday, February 2nd. By selling our animals, students help raise money for future livestock products and future educational expenses. The second way that you can help is by participating as a buyer at our freezer cell, which will be held in conjunction with the live auction, to help those students who weren't fortunate enough to make auction this year.
Hello, my name is Sanaya Johnson, and I am the president at Umbel High School. This year, I will be raising a steer for the Umbel Livestock Show. And tonight, I want to tell you about some of our traditions that we have at the Livestock Show. One of them is our Special Kids Day. This is when we invite special needs kids from all around the Umbel ISD district to come in and have a look at our livestock show. They come in, we give them a tour of our showgrounds, we show them some animals, they have lunch with us, and we play games with them. This is one of our traditions. Our next one is our Unified Show. This is when a special needs kid is partnered with an FFA member, and they get to show either a lamb or a goat in our Unified Show, which, you know, that would become their buddy. Then, they get judged and get a prize for it. By doing this, this exemplifies the end of our motto, "Living to Serve," and I am so proud to be able to experience these activities.
Good evening, my name is Mackenzie Terrell, and I'm a senior at Kingwood Park High School. This year, I am raising swines and turkeys. As FFA members and students in agriculture courses, we are very grateful for the Umbel ISD community for supporting our learning by providing great facilities through bonds and other fundings. The South Ag Barnes now have a covered show arena and restrooms to provide a place for the progress show and practices during rain or shine. This is for students from Atascasita, Umbel, and Summer Creek High Schools. Students from Kingwood Park and Kingwood High Schools are also excited to be raising animals in the new Agricultural Science Center that opened last fall. This new ag center has opened as a state-of-the-art facilities for all species, plus a covered arena for restrooms. We hope that many of you were able to attend during December during our Santa's Farm.
My name is Josie Johnston, and I am a senior at Kingwood High School. I am currently raising a steer for this year. In FFA, we learn more than just annual husbandry. We learn about business skills, public speaking, and leadership skills. Some accomplishments of Umbel ISD FFA are, we had 25 FFA members complete a detailed record and expenses reports to earn their Lone Star degree, the highest degree in the Texas FFA. Additionally, we had several teams advance the area leadership development contest, and two teams competed at the state leadership contest in early December. We also have two district FFA officers representing Umbel ISD. A district officer serves 18 FFA chapters within our area. Thank you so much for your continued support of our programs, which allows us to excel.
My name is Zoe Kelly, and I'm a junior at Atascasita High School. This year, I'm raising a lamb and chickens. Each year, we dedicate our livestock show to a community member who has had a great impact on our chapters and support our livestock show. This year, our show has been dedicated to Umbel Rodeo and Barbecue Cook-Off President, Mr. Stacy Williams. Mr. Williams has done a great deal to improve the Umbel rodeo experience and helped to add the Umbel... and helped to add the barbecue cook-off competition. He annually works as a spotter at the Umbel Livestock Show Auction, showing his dedication to our success. If you see him, please congratulate him for all his hard work over the past few years. Thank you for all that you do for students like myself, our teachers, and our community. We look forward to seeing you at our livestock show.
You all are excellent public speakers, and that is a wonderful talent and skill to have. So, congratulations on your animals, but also your public speaking. Very impressive. This concludes tonight's announcements. We're happy to be back in school after winter break and look forward to resuming superstaffers next month at the February Board Meeting.
Thank you very much. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outlined in the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than one minute. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the Umbel ISD website. Our first speaker this evening is Justin Lurie.
There are some financial figures I would like to bring to your attention. The 2022 bond order that was issued in June of this year, there is clear language, "The aggregate principal amount is not to exceed $185 million for purposes of Proposition A, and not to exceed $15 million to pay for the cost of issuing the bonds." Now, naturally, I am summarizing this due to my second-long time limit. I've been showing figures that the actual par amount is over $189 million, and the costs are $16 million. Yes, I know, this sounds like a bunch of figures, it sounds like a bunch of numbers, but here it is. Here is the bottom line. There is over $5.6 million overextended beyond the legal limits, as per Chapter 1371 of the Texas Government Code and Chapter 45 of the Texas Education Code. Am I correct, or am I misunderstanding? I'm asking. Please do not email me. It's a matter of millions of dollars. This should be in the public domain and not...
Thank you. The next speaker, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing your name correctly, Maria Marungi.
Hello, my name is Maria, and I am a senior at Atascasita High School. Being in high school, especially with being in my last year, me and many other students are very stressed and overwhelmed with both school and home-related problems we try to get through every day. As a way to escape the stressors, we use books that deeply relate to us and our obstacles. But with the recent decisions made on our access to certain books has only added barriers to the creative minds of students in this district. Umbel ISD Board Library Policy claims that they adhere to the interests and needs of the students and faculty when selecting library materials, but decisions on books, whether, such as Eleanor &amp; Park, reflect unnecessary censorship on books that would have followed Umbel ISD's purpose and objectives of promoting personal growth and enjoyment for all students. I hope for the sake of all current and future Umbel ISD students that you can take into consideration that your decisions' impact on this matter has not...
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you very much. Next, we have Maya Richard, or Richard, Maya Richard.
Good afternoon, I'm Maya Richard. I'm a senior at Atascasita High School. The last time I was here, I spoke on the lack of diversity in Umbel ISD libraries and books, and it pains me to see that I have to be here to talk about the same thing again. Restricting access to books in our libraries hurts all students. Students use books to escape from the stress of our day-to-day lives, which makes it imperative that students read books with characters and themes that relate to them. Banning or restricting books, most of which are based on diverse cultures, lifestyles, or sexualities, is nothing more than an attempt to exclude certain students and make other students ashamed of learning about other experiences, which goes against Umbel ISD's anti-discrimination policy. Students deserve representation in the books in our libraries, and we deserve to be a part of the conversation on books and decisions that affect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Madison Davila.
Hello, I'm Madison Davila, a junior at Atascasita High School. It has come to our attention that a process of restricting diverse books and experiences and backgrounds has begun. The fact of the matter is that you are restricting voices in the right of knowledge and the ability to understand different experiences. We may be young, but we are not ignorant, and by you deeming these books unfit, you're also deeming that these voices unfit and unworthy. If we're to limit these voices, then where does it stop? If you have concerns about particular content, you can discuss that with your teen rather than attempting to restrict everyone because of your personal feelings. Umbel ISD promotes a portrait of a graduate, which includes being a global citizen, but how does censorship prepare us to be a global citizen? We hope that you will reconsider, or at least discuss this problem with the teens that are actually affected by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Martha Nyambe.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Martha Nyambe, and I'm a junior at Atascasita High School. This past Monday, I was shocked to see a banned bookshelf above my head librarian's desk. I thought to myself, wow, it's gotten to the point where we have to ban books, the foundation of our knowledge. I grew up going to the school libraries, checking out books with characters that resembled me to find comfort in different worlds. That is why I can't imagine that someone wouldn't be able to have the same privilege. Books with words far less worse than...
UMBLE ISD's purpose and objectives of promoting personal growth and enjoyment for all students. I hope for the sake of all current and future UMBLE ISD students that you can take into consideration that your decisions' impact on this matter has not...
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you very much. Next, we have Maya Richard, or Richard, Maya Richard.
Good afternoon, I'm Maya Richard, I'm a senior at Atascocita High School. The last time I was here, I spoke on the lack of diversity in UMBLE ISD libraries and books, and it pains me to see that I have to be here to talk about the same thing again. Restricting access to books in our libraries hurts all students. Students use books to escape from the stress of our day-to-day lives, which makes it imperative that students read books with characters and themes that relate to them. Banning or restricting books, most of which are based on diverse cultures, lifestyles, or sexualities, is nothing more than an attempt to exclude certain students and make other students ashamed of learning about other experiences, which goes against UMBLE ISD's anti-discrimination policy. Students deserve representation in the books in our libraries, and we deserve to be a part of the conversation on books and decisions that affect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Madison Davila. Davila?
Hello, I'm Madison Davila, a junior at Atascocita High School. It has come to our attention that a process of restricting diverse books and experiences and backgrounds has begun. The fact of the matter is that you are restricting voices in the right of knowledge and the ability to understand different experiences. We may be young, but we are not ignorant, and by you deeming these books unfit, you're also deeming that these voices unfit and unworthy. If we're to limit these voices, then where does it stop? If you have concerns about particular content, you can discuss that with your teen rather than attempting to restrict everyone because of your personal feelings. UMBLE ISD promotes a portrait of a graduate, which includes being a global citizen, but how does censorship prepare us to be a global citizen? We hope that you will reconsider, or at least discuss this problem, with the teens that are actually affected by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Martha Naimb.
My name is Martha Naimb and I'm a junior at Atascocita High School. This past Monday, I was shocked to see a banned bookshelf above my head librarian's desk. I thought to myself, wow, it's gotten to the point where we have to ban books, the foundation of our knowledge. I grew up going to the school libraries, checking out books with characters that resembled me to find comfort in different worlds. That is why I can't imagine that someone wouldn't be able to have the same privilege. Books with words far less worse than the ones that I hear daily in the school hallways are being challenged, yet I must sit and hear the N-word used way too many times from books that remain in our English curriculum. Books that portray different genders and sexual identities are being challenged merely because it makes parents uncomfortable. We cannot curate libraries like this. A parent should mediate what their child is reading, not the entire district. Everyone deserves a chance to be represented in the books that they read, and oftentimes, public libraries are the only places for someone to do so. By taking away our books, you are jeopardizing your students' growth, creativity, and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ella Abarcas. Thank you. Tracy Shannon.
There are no banned books. A banned bookshelf in the library simply means that the librarian is promoting books that are being challenged, which means they're promoting perverted books like this one. Here's an example of what you can find in our school library. A boy ejaculating onto a piece of paper and crumpling it up. A book about consent, which we're all on board with that, but hey, what about kink kids? No, that does not belong in the public library. And what about a book depicting two girls having oral sex? You guys created the policy, the policy says that you're responsible. This is what's in our schools. It's not okay. You should be fired, Dr. Fagan, because you approved this. It's on you. Here's a few excerpts. "I know you're a slut, you smell like cum, suck me off." "I'm going to eat her pussy." Do you even know how to eat pussy? "I know I was taught how to eat a butthole, I would teach you some pussy-eating technique." "I don't have time for that, I've got twenty pussies over here that I need to eat, I'm on pussy deadline." Look at some... Man, I'm bisexual, and if any person can get me hard, man, you must get hard on from all kinds of freaky shit. Look at some titties, get hard. Look at some dudes' funky dick, get hard.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan Bast.
Hi, first I want to say thank you guys for your time, for serving on the Board. My comment is about my complaint that I filed a couple of months ago. As I believe it was Martina stated, per policy, it's handled by the lowest-level employees so that a reasonable resolution can be found, but however, my complaint has been handled by an attorney since the very beginning. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but Case Law has handled my complaint. So I have a complaint hearing on January 25th, which I requested it be open, and I'm being told it's going to be closed because it involves charges against an officer, but no officer is being charged with anything. I do feel like it should be open to the public, because I feel like it's about Board policy and behavior and how you're handling parents. So I will send an email to request that it be open, but I just wanted the public to hear too my feelings about it, and that it is on the 25th, and as of now, it's closed, and I've gone through the proper avenues, but an attorney has done it, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Erin Green.
Having a classical education includes teaching students phonics, grammar, true math, true science, and true history. In 2016, Mike Morath became the Education Commissioner through the TEA. With his confirmation, many changes were implemented across the state that have been detrimental for children. Since being in office, education has gone downhill. Forty percent of students perform below basic proficiency levels. Despite implementing Math Innovation Zones, a pilot under SB 1318, there has been seven percent drop in math scores from 2015 to 2019. The experiment of implementing computers in the classroom and state interventions has been a dismal failure and should return to local school districts. In our own district, it was reported that only thirty-eight percent of our students are college-ready. Our forefathers were taught classically, and the way people learn how to read, write, and do math has not changed. Therefore, since classical education works, UMBLE should return to this best practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren, I don't have a last name.
This is about Atascocita High School. They've got a new fighting, discipline-consequence thing going on, and the one thing they have here is verbal disagreements will result in three-day suspension and five days of ISS for both students. Verbal disagreement, it's not fighting. That's what we teach our kids to do. Talk it out, speak it out, let's not fight it out. They are now threatening all the kids at Atascocita High School, don't know about the other schools, a verbal disagreement. That's an argument. That's kind of what we're doing right here. You want to talk back? That's an argument. You suspend it from school. Does anybody think that's right? It's one thing if you're fighting, but discussing, arguing, getting pissed off, whatever it is, three days suspended? That's a bunch of crap. And the other thing is, getting a hold of Atascocita High School. I tried to call, you can't get a live person. I had an emergency go on, could not get a hold of my son, called the school over and over and over again, kept getting recording. Leave a message, we'll get back to you within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. You know what? I needed my son right then and there. He doesn't take a cellphone to school. Could not get nobody.
Thank you. Comments by individual Board members? I'll begin with Mrs. Parker.
I'm going to keep it brief. I just wanted to congratulate Charles Cunningham, who was sworn in as our new state representative today, and Senator Creighton, who was sworn in and will be chairman of Public Ed and Higher Ed. So, welcome back to school, have a great spring.
Thank you. Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. First, this is always, January is, it's my opinion, always the best meeting of the year, hands down. And I just want to thank you, everybody, for all of the great gifts and kudos to us. It's very much appreciated, it really is, and warms our hearts. I know I speak for everybody in that case. I just want to hats off to Mr. Gardner, I came out of your shop, or maybe it was Ms. Mount's help, but the concierge program, Dr. Fagan, I give you credit too, I don't know exactly, but seeing that, I mean, what a great idea, although I shouldn't say it publicly, huh, because somebody might steal it. But anyway, that's awesome, because I can imagine, you know, it's great for people who come to a campus fish out of water, basically, so that's great. Congratulations to our high school students who participated back in November, the Desbien Festival, and there were a number of them who qualified for scholarships and will go on to compete in June, I guess it's in Indiana is where the national competition is. That's just great. I mean, again, our kiddos just continue in all realms to knock it out, knock it out of the park in those areas. I want to thank the students who spoke, who came. Thank you for giving up your time and coming. I know it's not an easy thing to do, to get up in public like that. You all did a great job. You spoke very well, very articulate. Proud to know you are our students, just to see you here and to hear what you had to say. I will say again, though, and it really distressed me to see that because of our time limit, we had to cut a student from completing her statements. You know, I looked at what we were going to have tonight, and there were ten people signed up, only nine spoke, but even with ten, I would think we could afford another ten minutes of our time, we'd be giving each person at least two minutes. I just think it's... I would like somebody to tell me why we only have a one-minute limit, or why we have a one-minute limit on speaking. People come to engage, and other people get to hear them, if they're watching on the livestream or later on, or if they come to the meeting. I would think we'd want to encourage that. We may not always agree with what's being said, but that's okay, too. So I, again, I've said it before, and I'll continue to say it, because I really have an issue with it, and that really distressed me when we had to tell that young lady to stop speaking about what she wanted to speak about. And not to mention the adults, too. I mean, some might have wanted to speak longer. But anyway, with that, everybody, welcome back. Hope you all had a great holiday season, and onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kertschoffer?
Welcome back, everybody. And kids, thank you for our gifts, and I'll catch everybody at the education report shortly.
Thank you. Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is too my favorite time of year, not only the school board appreciation, but it's rodeo time. I look forward to this every year. The FFA programs are near and dear to my heart, always have been. We are honored that they are recognizing my good friend Stacy Williams, the president of the rodeo, as their honoree this year. He's put in tireless hours and time and effort to not just develop the rodeo for what it is, but donating time back to the FFA programs during the auction and year-round. It's not a weekend event, this is a year-round endeavor, so I really want to thank them for recognizing his efforts over the years. It's a body of work that I know he's proud of, and I'm proud to call him my friend, and welcome back, everyone. I trust everyone had a great holiday, great Christmas, great New Year, and let's finish strong.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison?
Well, keep it short. I agree, this is my most favorite time of the year, but thank you, thank you, thank you for the gifts. And kids, you did an awesome job. Thank you for coming, thank you for expressing your concerns.
Thank you very much. So just want to say first off, Happy New Year, welcome back, everyone. Want to first welcome, we have a new Associate General Counsel, Morgan Morrow. Wanted to say welcome to the team. I think this is your second day, but welcome to UMBLE ISD, we really appreciate it. Appreciate having you here, nice to meet you today. Also, Chief Cook, of course, he steps out as soon as I'm going to say. National Law Enforcement Day was yesterday, and I wanted to specifically thank the UMBLE ISD Police Department for all that they do and all law enforcement. We really do appreciate and are thankful for your service. So, Journay back there, make sure he watches this part of the video later. Thank you to the students that spoke and all of our speakers. It's always important for us to have you here and to hear your voice. And last, we have a certificate here from one Congresswoman. Usually, we have lots of things from different elected officials, but we have a congressional recognition from Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia, so just wanted to say thank you for that as well. And that is all I have. Our next item is comments by administration. Dr. Fagan?
Well, I just want to welcome everyone back. I hope everybody had a relaxing winter break, time with friends and family, and spend time with children, and get a couple of things done on their to-do list, but we've had a great restart. Been out at Eagle Springs the other day, it was just a wonderful visit, saw a lot of the literacy instruction assessment, actually in practice, that one-on-one experience, and all the other students in the classroom really working on their individual needs in groups. It was really, it was just a fantastic visit, so very impressed with Eagle Springs and everything April Maldonado has got going on out there. They were having a pep assembly, and she said, "I know we don't have any athletics, but it's just fun." And I said, "Well, that's okay, you're all little future Eagles, so you can celebrate the Eagles up the road." She agreed, and they have their own drum line at Eagle Springs Elementary School, and it is really impressive, really impressive. The music teacher there has been there since the opening of the building, and you can tell. Very impressive. So it's been a great start, and I'm very happy to be out on campuses. Thank you to the students who are here, we always enjoy working together. We have student advisories, and I know Dr. Anne Johnson has a lot of students participate in professional development, because we really do involve and believe in the student voice and having that voice at the table. And one of the students said something about the parents, and I think that's the other thing that UMBLE ISD aspires to do really well, is to partner with parents in making those most difficult decisions, making sure your parents have the information available to them. I have two daughters, and I used to only see what Olivia was reading when her books were overdue, because I'd get an email, right, that I owe ten cents or whatever it is. But thanks to Dr. Melissa Lee and others, now I can see what she checks out because it pops up in Hack. And so I get to know what Warrior Cats were into now and those kind of things before they're overdue. And so it's, I really appreciate the way that this team works very hard to partner with parents and provide information so that they can have that intervention if necessary, if they feel strongly about something. So wanted to mention that because I did agree completely with our speakers who said, you know, really, parents should have that say, and I think that that's where UMBLE ISD lives in breeze, is we're partners with parents. So beyond that, we're looking forward to a great second semester. It is a busy time of year, highly recommend the livestock auction, if you haven't ever gone to that, you've got to go. Even if you don't intend to bid, it's great, they have a little silent auction, and then they do the freezer sale, which is another option for them, and the students really pour their heart and soul into those animals every morning, every night. They're out there walking them, feeding them. I've seen goats walking down Kingwood Drive before. They love those animals, and they take great care of them, so it's a wonderful program, and you can see it produces wonderful leadership in our students. So very proud of a lot of the things in our FFA and Ag programs, and the new facilities are fantastic, and we thank our community for that. So that's all I have for tonight. Oh, and I should say this, happy Board appreciation. I really do appreciate all of you very much, and I hope, I say that often, and people are going to think it's just hyperbole, it's not. I genuinely appreciate the opportunity as a professional educator to work with a Board that really does want what is best for each and every student, even if that doesn't equal the very best star score this week, because they change the star criteria all the time. So in any case, you all are really fantastic, you're leaders in education, you allow all of us to do what we do every day, and it makes a difference, not just in UMBLE ISD, but in this Houston area and in the state of Texas, because it broadens people's thinking about what's possible and what we could be doing. But it's with your support and permission that happens, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Fagan, and I think I can probably speak for all of my Board colleagues. We believe that we have the best superintendent in the state. Thank you so much for all you do. We will now have updates from our Board Associations and Committees. First Committee is the Advocacy Committee. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Mrs. Lamont Dixon. So I just drove back from Austin right before I came to this meeting, and it's, the legislative session has kicked in. Ms. Lamont Dixon and I will be going to the Texas Association of School Boards Advocacy Conference in DC in February, advocating for the needs of the district, and we will start meetings here in the district shortly after that.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison?
Yes, Madam President. At this time, our Audit Department is extremely busy. We'll have a report in February.
Thank you. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, nothing new to report. We did not meet in January, we're going to meet on February 14th, prior to the next Board Meeting. That should be a fairly long meeting with a lot of information, so should have a lengthy report next month.
So that's the same day as the school board meeting, right? No? Oh, it is, oh, it's on the 21st? Okay, okay. I was about to say, we're just going to go straight from there to here. I was going to mess with you a little bit, thank you. Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that's me, nothing to report. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, nothing to report, other than I get to go home with this beautiful T-shirt from the Wildcats.
That's nice.
And it went well with my black sweater, so I've got to put it on. Now, we'll be meeting next month.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Kertschoffer?
Okay, this is not a paid advertisement, so here we go. It's rodeo time. Cooler weather means the UMBLE Rodeo and Barbecue Cook-Off is coming. This two-weekend event is a longstanding tradition in our community, and the proceeds benefit our own Education Foundation, which ultimately means it benefits our own educators and students. So I'd encourage all of you to come out and enjoy the cook-off on January 27th or 28th, or the rodeo the following weekend, or even better yet, come out both weekends. There are many sponsors and volunteers who make all of these events possible, but I want to give a shout-out of gratitude to the four title sponsors... want to give a shout-out of gratitude to the four title sponsors of the UMBLE Rodeo and Barbecue Cook-Off, which are Robins Auto Mall, Waste Management, City of UMBLE, and PBK Architects.
Thank you. And Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Mr. Holmes is not here this evening. Action items from closed session. Item 4A, personnel recommendations. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations with addendum as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Action items from closed session. Item 4B, Level 3 Employee Complaint Appeal, Board Policy DGBA. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board uphold the administration's decision on a Level 3 employee grievance under Board Policy DGBA as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Moving to item 5, our consent agenda. Item 5A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Consent. Item 5B, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item 5C, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item 5D, Approval of Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5E, Tax Refunds. Consent. Item 5F, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Consent. Item 5G, Approval of RFP Number 2021-005R, General Merchandise. Consent. Item 5H, Approval of RFP Number 2021-006R, Educational Service Consultants. Consent. Item 5L, Approval of RFP Number 2021-009R, Restaurant and Catering Services. Consent. Item 5J, Approval of RFP Number 2022-101, Miscellaneous Instructional Materials Vendor. Consent. Item 5K, Approval of RFP Number 2023-102, Services, Repairs, Maintenance, Installation, District-Wide. Consent. Item 5L, Board Resolution Regarding Prevailing Wage Rates. Consent. Item 5M, 2022-2023 State Compensatory Education Local At-Risk Criteria. Consent. Item 5N, Staff Development Waiver for the 2023-2024 School Year. Consent. Item 5O, Adoption of the District Calendar for 2023-2024 School Year.
Pull.
Thank you. Mr. Kertschoffer, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agendas 5A through, what's that? We're pulling to N.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Returning to our pulled items, our first pulled item, and only pulled item, was item 5O, Adoption of the District Calendar for the 2023-2024 School Year. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second? Okay, I'll pause.
We'd like to just share a few slides during the discussion, if that's okay, just to...
That sounds great.
We really want to take the opportunity to just sort of honor the process around the district calendar. So, just a brief reminder that UMBLE ISD was asked by the community to look at the Forney ISD calendar in 2016 and 17. And so, then we amended our District of Innovation Plan in 17, 18, to allow us to explore more calendar options. In 18, 19, we did three surveys that resulted in a calendar for next year, having October and February breaks. I believe that was the Choose Your Own Adventure survey, or it was the next year. Okay. It was 1920 was the first year we actually attempted the October and February breaks, and then that was the year we created the Choose Your Own Adventure calendar, because there was a lot of misunderstanding about what we could do and what we couldn't do altogether. So, we wanted people to have the opportunity to build their own calendars and see how difficult it is to get all the minutes, all the days, and everything in there that they wanted, and still have some summer. So, we did that, and the survey confirmed that the majority preferred the October and the February breaks, as long as the other nuances of our current calendar. So, 2021, we continued forward with that same calendar, more or less, and we did invite comments on the calendar, and then we did another survey, and the parents said, "Stop surveying us, we want consistency." That's a joke. But they, they did say they want consistency, and they, again, supported that calendar. So, then we get to 22, 23. This is the fourth year of the October and February breaks. So, we did, again, we invited comments on the calendar, because I was talking about this with our administrators, you know, when we put together the Summer Creek and Kingwood schedules after Harvey, there were comments that came in when we put those initial schedules out that actually helped us build better schedules. And it was really group thinking that created the possibility of what we ended up doing. And so, we want to make sure that we have that voice at the table. So, we want to put these out for comments and make sure that we're hearing all those different voices and ideas. And so, we did get a few comments back, and literally, it wasn't very many in comparison to the number of people, I'll show that in a minute. But a few things that popped up as proposals were to end school in May, include breaks throughout the year, schedules middle and high school, late arrival days on the same days, schedule four-day weeks for elementary teachers to train, prep, collaborate instead of eight. Those are things we've changed, doesn't have students on campus on Election Day. So, these are things that we have incorporated in over time. So, this was our survey. We sent it out to 52,139 parents, and we had 621 respond. And so, a lot of times, that's good news, because that, what we're hearing from parents is that they're very happy with the current calendar. And what I'm hearing from other districts is that they're going to our calendar, because they feel that it's become a recruiting tool for us, for staff, and that it's actually a problem for them, because they're not on it to retain staff. And this is interesting, too. So, typically, I always think, hmm, if there's only 600 and some people that commented, they must have been all the negative comments. But the number one comment was that they liked the calendar. So, again, we see that level of consistency around this calendar. The proposed calendar, the top three things was, number one, they liked the calendar. Number two was to start winter break later. And remember, this is not the majority, this is just an idea from a handful of folks who responded. And number three was end before Memorial Day. So, we always separate parents from staff, because we want to disaggregate and see what that looks like. So, this was the staff. We sent it to 9,146 staff members. 277 of those responded. And again, they liked the calendar, although that was number three on their comments. Number one was start winter break later, and an August start date instead of July, which was a little perplexing, because it's only one day of July. But we'll look at that in a second. So, on the staff topics were start winter break later, August instead of July, and then like the calendar. So, we see that like the calendar popping up in the top three over and over. And then here are some comments that, I'm not going to read them to you, you can read them, but we've inserted some of the positive calendar topics, because that was the number one most mentioned thing. And this was the start the winter break later. Now, you know, the calendar moves every year, and it's somewhat difficult for us to navigate putting those end dates on different days in the middle of a week, because what happens is families want to travel, and students end up missing, and then we have ADA issues. And so, really, the most fiscally responsible thing to do is for us to end on the 15th, and that gives families time to travel without students being gone, and allows us to finish finals in a way that makes sense for our staff and for our students. In addition, December 15th is the most common day that school districts are ending the semester, according to the Region 4 survey. Parent topic, end before Memorial Day. That works well for us when Memorial Day is, like, later in the month. It doesn't work as well for us when Memorial Day moves up like it does this year. And so, really, we don't have a lot of choices when it has, the calendar is like this. And so, we would have to do three days after Memorial Day, but it's still really in the month of May, and that's part of the challenge. This was also the start winter break later one, and again, we have the same issues as far as if we end on the 20th, we'll have very low attendance probably on the 18th and 19th, which is, becomes an ADA issue for us and other topics like that for our teachers giving finals. This is return August instead of July, and I believe we're only coming back one day of July. So, really, it's a very small difference. And we do have to have 187 teacher days, and what the principals overwhelmingly told us is that teachers would rather have another day at the beginning of the year to get their rooms ready, do professional development, et cetera, rather than have another day at the end of the year when everybody's ready to have summer break. So, that one extra day at the beginning of the year could have been moved to June, but really, they didn't want that either. This is the like the calendar comments from our staff members. And again, I have, I don't have the number, but many superintendents have approached me in Region 4, saying they're going to our calendar, because it's become a recruit and retain issue for them, for staff. Can spring break be in April? This comes up every year, because New Caney does April as a spring break. But interestingly, no other district in Region 4 does an April-spring break. So, we have to remember that a lot of our staff members have children or in other districts. And so, while we would match up with one district, we would go out of sync with 20-some other districts in the Region 4 area. So, and the other thing that would happen is Lone Star takes their spring break then, which, this is the only break our Sconzo students who are taking Lone Star classes actually get to have with the district. They don't get to do the February or the October breaks, because Lone Star is still in session. So, if we moved this one, they would have none of the three. So, the proposed calendar supports teachers with time for training, planning, collaboration throughout the school year. It's been very, very helpful to us during very challenging COVID times, when people were really exhausted and needed that refresh. And I believe it's been, been part of what has allowed some of our older students, we talk a lot about sleep, in the older students and needing more time to sleep. Our calendars allow our high school students, who are very busy with multiple activities, to have some time to catch up in their rest and their homework. Even if they have to still go to practice, they have a lot of more free time. So, it's been beneficial that way also. Provides many more instructional days for students. This is a really interesting fact. So, a lot of people would think that because we have all those breaks, we don't have as many instructional days. We actually have more than everybody, except for one district, Spring Branch, who has one more day than we do. So, we're doing really well there. So, I think it's good to retell the story every so often, remember from where we came, why we're here, how we got here, and then be able to move forward. Any questions on the calendar from any member of the board? Great.
Okay, so no discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Item 6A, Order for Trustee Election. Mr. Kertschoffer, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the order for trustee election, calling for the election of positions 2, 6, and 7, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute all agreements, take all actions, and provide all notices necessary for the same, including but not limited to contracting with Harris County or any other governmental entity for purposes of conducting the election and incorporating information provided by Harris County regarding polling locations as it becomes available.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Next, our information item, we have information items only. Item 7A, 2021-2022 State Compensatory Education Evaluation. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Item 7B, Financial Services Reports. It is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Mr. Scarfo?
I just wanted to say, it was, it was very nice to see Ms. Temple here. Again, I wasn't expecting it, so it's a treat. I know this will probably be our last time we'll sit here in a meeting as an employee. Thank you for everything you've done over the years. What a great job.
Yes, thank you. Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? The time is now 7:59 PM. This meeting is adjourned.